I'm going to mute myself. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
All right, it is 7:08. The Marlborough Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. Would we call the roll of the members in attendance? Tom Pope?
Tom Pope is present.
Tom Golden?
Tom Golden is present.
Bob?
Bob is present.
Bob, okay. And I'm Ralph Lofton. And Paul Junta, the chairman, is in attendance but is recusing himself from this part of the meeting. This meeting is a continuation of the August 20, excuse me, the July 28th meeting. And the topic is 339 Boston Post Road. Would issue an order of conditions. My understanding is that that has not occurred, that their August 6th meeting did not result in an order of conditions that we could consider this evening. Consequently, I think unless Brian Falk has something to say and that we are probably left to continue this meeting until perhaps our next meeting. My understanding is that the Conservation Commission will meet again on August 20th. And the zoning board has a meeting on August 25th, at which time we should hopefully be able to consider the order of conditions and take action on this matter. Brian, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that sounds right, Mr. Chairman. And thank you again. I know this was a specially scheduled meeting in the hopes that the the Concom would have our order of conditions ready by now. Obviously, that didn't happen. I know the ZBA in relying on the opinion of the City's Solicitors Office wants to wait until that order of conditions is issued before issuing this decision. Then procedurally, you're correct. That's where we find ourselves.
All right. Any other member of the board have anything to add?
Not me.
I'm sorry, Bob?
Not me. Nothing from Bob.
Okay. Then, in that case, I declare this meeting, public meeting, closed. Do I hear a motion to?
No, you're continuing it.
We are continuing this meeting. Excuse me. We, I hear a motion to continue this meeting to our next meeting on August 25th.
You want us to say a time? 7 o'clock? Good?
At 7 o'clock, our nominal time, right.
Okay.
So, so we need a motion to continue, and I hear a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
A second.
Could the clerk call the roll? Tom, Tom Golden, would you call the roll, please?
Bob means says yes. Tom Golden says yes.
Tom Pope?
Tom Pope?
And Ralph Lofton says yes. So we are continued to August 25th at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do I think at this point I could turn the meeting over to Paul, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. This meeting, 22 Second Road won't start till 7:20.
7:20, okay, good. So do we stand in recess until 7:20?
Mm-hmm. You can turn off your mic if you want to.
All right.
And I'll turn mine back on also when it's close to 7:22.
Hmm.
All right, so you're on.
Okay, no.
If you're not speaking in the board meeting, then I'm going to put you on mute. When you need to speak, you can unmute yourself.
I'll put up her plan, okay? Last first. Why is that? Hey, last first. What's mine? Oh, this is mine. Almost.
Did you hear I had to interrupt Trump's talk recently? Because there was a Secret Service shot some guy outside my house. He's doing a press conference, and they rushed him off the stage. There's a guy outside with a gun. The Secret Service shot him. Yeah, yeah.
Really? When was, when was that?
Well, I got two, actually.
5 o'clock? Really? I didn't watch for this.
No, we were getting every, oh, I can't remember.
Oh, my God.
And I can't beat Trump's.
Okay.
Number one. Two.
Pardon me?
Is the power on the?
Yeah, the microphone's on.
The Marlborough Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. Will the members of the board please log in and tell us if you're present or not?
Ralph Lofton, present. Tom Pope, present.
Paul is being present.
Tom Golden, present. Paul Junta, present. The clerk will read a column to meeting. Notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a virtual public meeting on August 10th, 2020, at 7:20 p.m. Please see below on how to participate virtually. Public participation will be via virtual means only pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain permissions of the open meeting law, GLC 3818, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. The meeting information will be provided on the city's website at www.malboro-matt.gov/. The agenda and agenda packet will be posted on the city's calendar and the Zoning Board of Appeals website. The petition proposes to construct an addition at 22 Second Road being map six, possibly on the left side of the existing structure. That will be 9.1 feet from the side lot line. Also requesting relief on an increased lot coverage from an existing 32% to 37.2%. Maximum lot coverage is 30%. Table of lot areas, yards, and heights of structures. This is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming single-family house, house lot, and your proposed addition intensifies the existing non-conforming nature of the structure, which requires relief by way of a special permit stated in City Code Section 650-58B, located in Zone District Residence A-3. For further assistance, please contact the board at 508-460-3768. All interested persons are invited to the virtual meeting. Applicant or representative must be present. Thank you, Tom. The screen here for this virtual meeting should be showing the location of the existing building and the proposed addition, as well as the required and existing or proposed lot informations. Members can refer to that if they so desire. On the public, they may also refer to it. We'll try to have this application discussed now. The applicant or the representative will speak first. Please identify yourselves every time you speak. And board members may have questions of the applicant. And then the audience asks question. Again, whoever speaks, will you state your name and address every time you speak? Okay, do we have any, before that is started, Mr. Golden, do we have any letters or emails that have to be?
Don't believe so.
No.
Have any?
No.
Okay, so the petitioner or his applicant or representatives will now speak. Identify yourselves.
Good evening. Kevin Figurito, speaking for 22 Second Road, Tracy Rockwell. I'm not sure what, you know, we're just looking to put an addition on to make her home with two bedrooms conforming. The bedrooms that are existing now are not conforming, and they don't even have closets. So, and then her access to the basement is through the outside. And she's just looking to upgrade and to possibly, you know, bring that all into the house. And that's basically it.
Can you state your name and address again, please?
Kevin Figurito.
Dorito?
Figurito.
Figurito.
Yeah.
And your address, please?
40 Temi Road, Hudson.
I'm sorry, what, 40?
40, 40, Temi, T-E-M-I, Road, Hudson, Mass. 01749.
Thank you.
Okay, sir. The existing access to the basement, is that what is marked with the X on this plan?
Correct.
And that's going to be removed, or?
That's going to be the, we're gonna, we're, we're looking to put that into the house. Because right now, it's outside of the house. It's a bulkhead.
Right. Okay, so you're going to make an access to the basement from the same location?
Right.
Will it still be a bulkhead, or are stairs going down?
No, there'll be stairs. If it gets incorporated into the house, it'll be part of the house.
Okay.
Instead of having to go outside.
Bulkheads out here.
Yeah.
So the addition will be over that.
Yeah. No, I see that. Just wanted to make sure that's what you're talking about, the exterior access that you're talking about.
Oh, this is Ralph Lofton. Mr. Figurito, what is your relationship to the owner?
Contractor.
Say it again?
I'm the contractor.
Okay. Understand.
And the owner is Tracy Rockwell?
Correct. She's present.
Okay. And how many residents will be in that house? And how many bedrooms do they intend to have?
There is two bedrooms. There is two bedrooms now, neither of which have even a closet.
Are there going to be additional bedrooms added?
No, no. It, what it is, is just to expand the the bedroom so that it actually has a closet and to incorporate the bulkhead access to the basement. Because actually, one of the bedrooms, the one bedroom, there's two bedrooms, one being her bedroom, the other one being a spare bedroom. The spare bedroom is, is actually, has a set of folding drop-down stairs that you, you can access the basement through. However, you, you can't put a bed in that bedroom because, because you need to have access to the stairs. Or you go outside. So it's technically, right now, a one-bedroom.
And how many bathrooms are we having?
There's one bathroom.
Do I press snooze again? Do I press snooze again?
Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah, did you consider going, rather than the addition, did you consider putting a second floor on it at all?
A second floor?
Yeah, versus putting the addition, just going straight up.
I mean, if that was, if that's what our option would be, but he was looking to try to just keep it as a single, a single-level cottage, you know, keeping to what's in the area instead of making it a, you know, a two-decker home.
All right. Have any board members? Have any of the board members visited the site at all that have any questions about what appears in the neighborhood?
Can see it clearly. Was there any, was there any communication by any of the abutters about the project?
Um, to me, no, but apparently, one of the abutters has expressed concern. And, you know, also, the other thing about going up on the second story is that that's also going to be a lot more money as opposed to what, you know, is proposed to do here.
When year was the original house constructed?
Uh, I don't have that information in front of me.
Hi, this is Tracy Rockwell, 22 Second Road in Marlborough. The house was constructed in 1940.
Okay. According to the, the data that's shown in the chart on this plan by Duchamp and Dilis, it shows the addition to be 9.4 feet to the lot line and the front portion of it to be 9.1 feet, where 10 feet is required. News of the board, notice that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, this is Ralph Lofton. I've visited the property this afternoon, and it is, it's, it's consistent with the, excuse me, the other properties in the neighborhood. It's very tight on the lot, as you can see from the diagram. And this, this addition would really take up essentially all of what is now a side yard. Excuse me, on the, on that side of the house where the, where the bulkhead is.
Okay, so this would come almost right up to where the slope that goes down to the next yard is. Is that correct?
Yes.
Hi, this is one of the abutters. 11 First Road.
Name and address, sir?
Okay, John Barboza, 11 First Road.
11, what was?
11 First Road. I'm right behind 22 Second Road.
Okay.
I believe this, I don't, I'm not really sure, but the slope is basically situated with the back end of the yard, not necessarily the left side, which the applicant is looking to add in addition or remodel.
Basically, you're suggesting that it wouldn't make that big a difference to affecting the slope going in the back of the property?
No, we, we had our land surveyed back in 2010. I know where the property line is based on the survey results, and they're not building out to the back. They're building out to the left, based on my understanding. So that wouldn't necessarily impact at all 11 First Road. You're really looking at, if I look at what's trying to be done, is the left side of the property.
It looks like it's, on the left side is number 18.
Hi, this is Nancy Marazzo from number 18 Second Road.
Hi, Nancy.
How are you? So, um, listen, to be honest with you, I don't want to deny anyone anything that they want to do on their property. That's not what I'm about. My, our big concern is the privacy issue. Like, I understand that she wants to put an addition on, and I respect that, but if those are going to be bedrooms, so my bedrooms are on that side of the house, my fear is that the addition will be looking right into my bedroom window. That is basically my problem with it. Like, we are, as it is now, we're pretty darn close, and if she comes out this, you know, comes out nine more feet, I just want to make sure that, you know, our privacy is on both sides of the fence are respected.
Miss Marazzo, this is Ralph Lofton. How, what is the distance from your house to the property line? On that side?
I'm not, I'm not sure. She did have it surveyed. You'd have to ask her that. I would think from, I, I can't answer the question.
I understand, I understand the dimensions on her house. I'm asking, how far is it from your house, your bedroom, to the property line?
Probably about 15 feet.
15 feet, maybe?
Roughly. That's just a guess.
A guess, a good guesstimate is 15 to 17 feet.
So, Ms. Marazzo, does your, does your property include that slope, or is their property?
Well, so, again, if you were, where she had it surveyed, and I respect that that's where the line is. I'm not arguing that point at all. But if you do a straight line, that would come right on the top of the hill that's between our two houses.
So that fence at the, at the back, at the rear of her property, is that fence on the property line?
I'm not sure.
I know, it's not.
No, she's.
No, it's not. I believe it's two feet back on the property.
It's got to be at least, it's got to be six to four feet back from her property line. Definitely. Yes, definitely.
All right, so the addition would extend.
I think she's 28. She's 28. She's 28. Maybe she's 28. She's 18. Big one, right? She's here. She's in this house right here. Oh, okay, 18 is the.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments?
Um, this is Tracy Rockwell from 22 Second Road, Marlborough. In regards to Nancy's concern about having a bedroom window next to a bedroom window, that is the current situation right now.
But though, that, I'm, I'm. Hold on.
Are you saying that's the current situation now, Tracy?
Yes, that's correct, and the addition would only bring it out six additional feet in the back.
In the back, it's seven feet, right?
Seven feet, I'm sorry, yes.
In the front, it's going out 10 feet.
Correct.
So, yeah, right now, the back distance is about 17 feet, and the change is going to bring it to within seven feet.
Right.
Is what, or nine, yeah.
9.4 feet.
So it's going to go from about 17 to about 18.
Basically, the 9.4 feet is compared, and being compared with the 10 feet that is required because.
It is the closest one, it's.
1969.
On the corner, it's 9.1 feet.
So those two, two dimensions can be. So those two, two dimensions can be referenced to the 10 foot that's required.
So, Mr. Figueroa, can we speak, oh, we ask questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, my question to the, who's speaking, Mr. Figueroa, can you speak? Yeah, um, the, the law says, um, you know, essentially, uh, we can grant a special permit if the extension or change would not increase or intensify the existing non-conforming nature of the dwelling or house in question. So since this increases and intensifies the existing non-conforming nature, why should we give this special permit to this house and not to the real house that wants to do something with this?
Hi. This is, oh. Kevin Figueroa, 40 Temi Road. Um, so if you walk in that area, uh, there's, I do believe that there's been multiple, uh, changes of use, uh, changes of, uh, and additions granted on this, on that street. Um, I could be wrong, but I, I do believe, and, and we're not asking for, you know, to make it a three foot, uh, a, a three foot, we're still giving you, you know, almost, it's like nine feet.
I, I understand, my question is more along the line, if we granted this, which is in opposition to what the guidance we have is, um, you know, that, that might open up listening to a lawsuit by someone or complaints by neighbors that we went above and beyond what the guidance is in the law. So I'm wondering, is the case for us to grant this, um, extension that increases and intensifies the existing non-conforming nature of the house?
Okay, so I have a question for you. If we put a new foot fence up on the lot line, does that cover our, our privacy issue?
That doesn't answer my question. If you put a fence up, it would become even more non-conforming. Again.
Does Marlborough have a non, uh, uh, an issue with putting a fence on the property line?
Yes.
Okay, what, what is the, uh, conditions on putting a fence?
But, but still, I want to get back to my question. I don't, I'm not, I'm not talking about Mrs. Marazo's privacy, uh, question. I'm quoting you of the law and I'm wondering why we should give a special permit that violates the guidance of the law in this case.
Okay, so, so if we, if we go, if we go back to the drawing board and, and only leave, and leave the 10 feet on the whole property, then, then we wouldn't have an issue, correct?
I don't want to answer that in general, I'm just, you're making it more non-conforming than it is. If you were not making it more non-conforming, you wouldn't be here for a special permit. But since you're making it more non-conforming and intensifying the existence of the non-conforming nature, that's why you're here.
Hi, this is Tracy Rockwell at 22 Second Road. Um, if I may jump in, uh, the primary purpose of this addition is to provide a safe set of stairs to my basement. Um, currently, they are, uh, very difficult to navigate, um, so that is the primary purpose for this addition and that would be, um, you know, my, uh, personal preference for, um, receiving this permit.
Tracy, also, this is Paul, Paul Judd, the chairman. In the chart that is shown on your plot plan here, you see the maximum lot coverage that's required is 30%. Your existing lot coverage is 32% of the property, the land, and you're proposing to cover 37.2% of the land, which is a bigger increase over the required amount of 30%. That causes some problems here because it, it's not complying with the current zoning by law ordinances when it doesn't have any proposal that exists or that meets the existing or at least close to it. The fact that your existing already has almost everything that's non-conforming, a 5,000 square foot lot area when 12,500 is now required. You've got 50 foot of front, or 100 foot is the new requirement. You've got a 29.2 foot front, yeah, setback, or 20 feet is required, which is fine, and the, the minimum side yard is now required is 15 feet, but because you are pre-existing condition, we'd need at least 10 feet. And although your, your existing close proximity to the right lot, lot line is 6.2 feet, the 9.1 foot on the left side and the 9.4 feet setback at the far end are close enough to be within a 10 foot setback. But it kind of flies in the face of what your lot coverage is going to be. You're gonna increase the lot coverage by 7.2% when it's required to be 30%.
That's, uh, Paul, this is Ralph, that's actually a 16% uh, increase in lot coverage. It's seven, it's an additional 7%, but the increase from the existing coverage is 16%.
Right.
So that's two areas, like the increase of the non-conformity.
Now, one of the other things that we usually have to consider about this increase in the non-conformity is the effect that it has on the existing non-conformity, uh, the, the exact, the effect that this existing non-conforming structure has to the neighborhood. If it is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure, then a special permit can issued to the, but in this case, it looks like it is, is not in that case. It's substantially more detrimental than the, the increase is more detrimental to the neighborhood. Look at the plot plan that was submitted here from the entire neighborhood. There are several lots across the way on Second Road that have similar sized lots of 5,000, 5,500 square feet, which is a little bit more than 5,000 square feet for number 22 and number 28. And you have similar narrow, smaller sized lots on First Rod, Road. First Road has a couple of lots, number 17 and 18 lots that are narrow and they, uh, one has 5,500 square feet, the other one 4,765. And there are lots behind those, I'm not sure where the frontage is, but what I'm suggesting is that the neighborhood has the, a variety of lot sizes. And there are many of the smaller sized lots between this 4,765 and 5,000 square foot lot that, uh, are shown all over the neighborhood. So it doesn't, it's not something that, uh, the contractor is saying that you go up and down the street, there's a lot of changes made. Well, there were a lot of lots that had been enlarged, where people had probably had, uh, had smaller lots and combined them into larger lots. In this case, you have a real small lot that has other small lots on both sides of the street. I have a concern of whether you can say a state that is not substantially more detriment, detriment, detrimental than the existing structure is. The proposed change is gonna be more detrimental, in my opinion. But any observations from board members?
This is Ralph, I would, I would just say again that I visited the property this afternoon and, uh, the house is very tight on the lot and to add this, uh, annex onto the side is, it's really going to look like it's shoehorned into, in, onto the property. My feeling is it's gonna, it's gonna over, it's gonna be too big for the property.
Okay, anyone else have any comments along those lines? Whatever comments you wish to make, board members?
Is there any, um, is there any way you could bring it down to eight feet off the house and come straight down and then square off at the, uh, the, uh, the back of the house? So you're only coming off, you just put a straight eight foot addition down the side of the house, same length as the house, and then your lot coverage, uh, wouldn't be, would be decreased, uh, you know, there would be decreased.
That much? Three feet, but a 17 feet.
Still a little bit non-conforming.
Yes.
Yeah. Kevin Figueroa, 40 Temi Road. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if, if there was, if this was a concern, um, if this was a concern in 10 feet, with the addition being 10 feet, uh, and we could get away, get to doing it with eight feet, then that's fine, I'll just have to make that work. I mean, basically, the, the front portion of the house, towards the front of the house is, is gonna enlarge the living room, which is gonna allow to put a ba, a, um, a closet for the bedroom that is now being used, but it's not being used because if she wants to go down into the basement, she has to go that way or she goes outside. All she's looking to do is enclose and incorporate the bulkhead to her, inside of her house. I don't think that's gonna make it detrimental, we already have it.
Six feet.
On the side of the house.
Six feet.
Well, this is Ralph again, and I just want to echo the point that Bob made earlier is that granting this special permit, given that there are several other very small lots, undersized lots in that neighborhood, may invite others, uh, to do basically the same thing. So we may find ourselves right back here with yet another, uh, request for a special permit for exactly the same reasons.
And, and is that such a bad thing to be able to go access your house from the inside and not have to go outside to go to your basement?
How far out does that bulkhead go now from the house? The five foot?
Probably six feet.
And you're saying that that's one of the main reasons she wants the extension to give a more closet area in the bedroom, but to be able to access that basement area from where the bulkhead sits?
Yeah.
Would you, would you be willing to revise the addition to say maybe eight feet at the most?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We could do eight feet and go right, uh, uh, eight feet off the house square and to the back square, that, that would be fine. We're just looking to add the stairs to the house. The way it is now, the house is a two-bedroom house, okay? But one of the bedrooms, the bedroom that is facing the neighbor, okay, it, it can't have a bed in it because it has a pull-down set of stairs. So she wants to eliminate that so she can have that bedroom back and access from the bulkhead.
So, Mr. Figueroa, I'm sorry if I wanted your name, it's Bob Levine speaking. I understand what you're saying and there is no problem with wanting to access the room, but there are zoning regulations put into effect in the city for a reason. This particular area close to the lake has about 10 or 11 properties, just on the, on the one little page that I have, that are about the same size. And people bought properties in that area knowing they had the size limitation and other people, like perhaps Mrs. Marazo, bought properties in that area knowing what the regulations were about how close other people are going to come to their property. So you already have a property that's non-conforming with the current, uh, laws and that's fine, but now you want to increase that non-conformity and if everybody or other people come to us, they'll have the, you know, the, the excuse that, well, you gave it to him, you should give it to us because we want to have a, a room also. So I can't support, uh, increasing the non-conformity. If it was a gigantic lot and there was tons of room from one to another, then that wouldn't affect the neighborhood as much as, as Paul Judd was mentioning. But in a small neighborhood like this, where people are expecting a certain amount of privacy, they, there's a high suitor expensive properties near the lake, then I can't support increasing the non-conformity and also increasing the, uh, lot coverage, which is, has to do with drainage being near the lake also, um, in, in this case, so. I, I can't support increasing the non-conformity of this.
Okay, so, so how do we get a set of stairs to the basement?
I, I can't answer that.
It depends on several factors. If this board decides to deny the request for the special permit, I believe that you would have an opportunity to come back for the revised plan, but I'm not sure, so is there a time limitation when they could do that? If it's denied, is that to be new business?
We've been working on this project since October of last year.
Okay.
No, they will just have to go back to building. They would have to go back to building.
Yeah.
This is too much, it's too much involved in this. They have to go back to building, getting a denial letter, costing them filing fee, building, other building permit application fee.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem is they wouldn't do that.
So, so would the board be happier if we, if we tore the roof off and put a, a second story on it? Is that my understanding? So we take a cottage?
Well, the, it, it depends, sir, that the way your plan is designed and, and proposed, the building inspector would have to check it out, see whether it would meet his interpretation of the zoning codes with that type of a design. If he has no problem with it, you could probably get a building permit without having to come before this board. Anything else? If you have a revised plan and change some of the dimensions on that, it would be.
Five feet?
Let me finish, uh, so let me finish. The other opportunity would be if you want to revise the plan along the plans you're talking about and, uh, reducing the footprint with a smaller addition, but we still have to pass the judgment of the building inspector, who may or may not have a denial with it. If, if he denies it, it still would come back to us, but probably give, uh, this board the opportunity, maybe give it a more favorable response. But either way, the ball is in your court, basically, because I think.
We've already said.
The sentiment I'm getting from the board members are that it would probably be not, not enough votes for this to pass this evening.
We've already said we would drop it down to six feet. All we want to do is get a set of stairs to the basement, that's all.
That's your choice, sir, we can't design it for you. You'd have to show that on a plan and go back to the building inspector and you may have to even refile as a new plan. and you may have to even refile as a new plan.
This Ralph, Sue, could the petitioner withdraw and resubmit another plan later without an additional filing fee?
Um, they could withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah.
And then if they come back with another plan, I got to look up the code. I think they have to go before the planning board and let them judge to see if the plan is any different than what was originally presented to the zoning board. But I have to verify that. But I'm pretty sure. But whatever you decide to do, if you withdraw without prejudice, whatever plan you revise will have to go to the building department for review again. And then I think the building department will make that judgment if you can, if you should go to the planning board, because they're the permitting branding authority for this, to see if the plan is, that the revised plan is substantially different than the original plan. If it is, then you can come back to the zoning board.
So if we go from 10 feet to six feet, is that not a substantial decrease in size? I'm confused, I...
Well, then, that's the judgment, you would go back to the building department and that's his judgment if you should proceed to the planning board.
But, look, the building commissioner told me that this, that, that he thought that this would be no issue in this, on this property. So now you're telling me that 10 feet is, is an issue. Now going to six feet, I have to start all over. I've been working on this project since October, okay? All this customer wants to do is put a set of stairs to the basement. That is all. There is nothing else.
Isn't there a proposed addition to the house and the deck that only comes 4.4 feet from the other side? That's also on this plan, not just a set of stairs.
That's a deck, yeah.
How do you access the set of stairs inside of your house? You need to have, I mean, if you want us to go six feet, we can go six feet. I just have to revise it and redo the, the, you know, the drawing and whatnot. But do I actually have to come back here and waste more time? Like I said, I've been here since October. I've gotten the runaround. We are now in August. I don't know if you guys, if I need to specify how many months that is. That makes it look like this project won't even get done this year. And all we want to do is put stairs in.
It's complex.
I'll keep on one of the Google sites.
All right, sir, I think this board is kind of being a dead posse. We have different ideas, so the board members have different ideas of what could be done. But we can't make the decision for you, okay? The most we can act upon is what's before us now. And basically, the questions we've asked and the comments we've made should give you some idea that we're really not that pleased with what you're proposing.
Come on, but you're going to make me go back to the drawing board and go through all this again? I mean, you know...
That's your choice. That's your choice.
If it's six feet, that's all we're going to get. If we get approval for six feet, that's what we're going to get. I mean, what is the issue?
We can't say that's going to be approved, all right? There's just suggestions that were made by some of the board members here, including myself.
Okay.
We're not in a position of designing it for you. If you make suggestions, it's up to you to look at what the value of those suggestions are and whether you think you can take care of your client and her wishes based on how you're going to propose the construction where. And then once you've decided which way you want to go, then you go back to the building inspector and see what he says about it. And he will either deny it or approve it and recommend that you go to the planning board for other interpretation.
So we're asking for 10 feet, okay? That's the most we're asking for, okay? If you were to allow us six feet, heck, I would even go with five feet now at this point, okay? Why can we not just have a stipulation of five feet, six feet maximum? I mean, I don't understand why I have to go through this all over again.
The issue of the distance, the issue of the distance is not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is you have a non-conforming structure that was purchased all while knowing it's non-conforming. And now you want to make it additionally non-conforming, whether it's by six feet, two feet, one foot, or whatever. You want to make it additionally non-conforming in two areas. One is the setback and one is the lot coverage. And the opinion of myself and maybe someone else or others here, I'm not sure, is that that's not within what the neighborhood can stand or can bear. So the, the, the distance is not the question here. The question is you're increasing the non-conformity of a structure that's not in the best interest of the neighborhood, in my opinion. I can't speak for the other board members.
Mr. Figurito, this Ralph Lofton calling, excuse me, speaking. The problem that we have is the only decision we can make is on the plan that's in front of us. We can't bargain with you or negotiate with you about changes to the plan. That's not our job, nor do we have the authority to do that. And we cannot, we cannot grant, we cannot grant approval for something in advance. So if you want to make a change to the plan, which is entirely your choice, we have to see the new plan. We can't just talk about what the new plan might look like. We have to see it.
It would be exactly the same thing, but minus five feet. Minus six, make it six feet, okay?
Sir, we can't negotiate with you on this point.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph.
We have been working on this project and I've been getting the runaround since October. Is this how the city of Marlboro operates? Because this, when I put this permit in in October, okay? They kept telling me, oh, we have to do this, we have to do that. I went, jumped through hoops and barrels to try to get this done. And, and then COVID hit. And now, we're five months after COVID has hit and we're still, this is my first meeting, okay? This thing has been going on for eight months. Is this normal practice for Marlboro? I'm just, I'm just want to know for future reference for my future clients.
Well, I hope you have many future clients, sir. But unfortunately, what you're proposing for your client tonight is not going to meet all the categories that we are concerned with. Okay, as was mentioned, you've got things that are not in compliance with some of the zoning requirements for existing non-conforming uses. And it's not, so it's not agreeing with the fact that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's one of the issues that we have to be considered as well. So if you were to make a different choice and change this based on some of the comments that have been presented to you tonight from different board members, that's your choice. And it's your, your decision to go before the building inspector with a new plan and take your chances with him before it comes back to us. If we deny this tonight, sir, there are two choices we have. If we deny this tonight, you could not proceed with another petition similar to this for this property for another two years, okay? If you give it leave to withdraw, you or the petitioner has to come in with something in writing asking leave to withdraw, and we approve a leave to withdraw, you could come back in less time than that to submit a new proposal. But those are the choices, two choices that I think you have here.
So, so you want me to withdraw this? So if I withdraw this, however, my, my understanding from, from the way the board is speaking, the, the non-conforming, because it's already non-conforming, my chances of getting any additional footage on this is going to be like slim to none, correct?
Yes, I guess so.
Well, I mean, let's be, let's be honest. I mean, you know, all this costs money and it costs time. And, you know, all we're trying to do is put in a set of stairs. That's, the stairs are already there. We're just going to access them from the house.
No, and we understand what you're saying about that, sir. And, and that's why there were suggestions made about reducing the space by incorporating the stairs within the increase. In this case, though, you're practically doubling the increase, doubling the size of the stairs. So, you know, this is something that you better consider.
And this is Tom Pope. Your, presently, your lot coverage is 6.67% over the allowable lot coverage. Your proposed addition will make that to 24%. That's, that's a big difference.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Is Tracy Rockwell the one that's the legal applicant for this petition?
Uh, no, it's me.
She's the homeowner, yeah, she's the one that submitted the petition. We have a case.
The applicant is Mr. Figurito. His whole name is, is that one?
Kevin Figurito.
Yes.
The applicant is Tracy.
She's the owner, the applicant was Kevin Figurito.
I'm the applicant.
Mr. Figurito. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir, you want to say something else? Kevin?
Uh, no, I'm, no, I'm at a loss.
Mr. Figurito, this Ralph Lofton again. We certainly understand your frustration. We've seen it before when, when people have come before this board having worked their bureaucracy. This is, we, we need to be careful though to, for you to understand what your options are. You do have the option to withdraw the application and you can resubmit at some point in the future without very much delay. But we want to be sure that you understand that if you bring another plan back to the board, we have made no assurance to you that that additional plan would be approved. We've thrown around numbers like a six-foot or an eight-foot addition. Please don't take that to assume that those kinds of changes would be approved. Each application must stand on its own and we would have the same considerations with any plan that you bring, bring before us again.
Correct, yeah. I, I've gotten, I can read between the lines. It, it seems to me that because this is a non-conforming lot, you are not willing to do anything on this lot because of lot coverage and everything. So what I think, what I think what we need to do now is withdraw and we're going to draw our plans, do a mini McMansion and, and put a second story on. We'll have to, we'll have to see what, what we can do with that.
Okay, sir, if you're going to withdraw, I would recommend that both you and Tracy Rockwell, where she is the owner, both committed in writing your request to withdraw this without prejudice.
No, you, you, the boy can vote.
We want something in writing, we can vote.
No, you can vote like that.
We can vote because it's a virtual meeting.
Yeah, you can ask the applicant what he wants to do, withdraw without prejudice.
Now, now a question for you, is all my fees now, can I continue with the same fees or am I going to get charged again? Because this, I mean, this is just a bunch of, a, a board and a bunch of people talking on a computer. This, I mean, this is...
All right, sir, we can probably, as long as you and Tracy are in agreement in both state that you want to have it to be, to get the condition of leaving without, I'm sorry, withdrawing, withdrawing the petition without prejudice. And so you're asking to leave to withdraw without prejudice, that's the right terminology. If both of you agree to that, we could take a vote on this board and approve that.
Well, I see, I, I think the board's leaving me no choice because it sounds like we're not going to get approved for, for anything. So we're going to have to just withdraw without prejudice.
Tracy, you agree with that?
This is Tracy Rockwell, 22 Second Road, yes, I agree with that.
Okay, I have other questions? Make a motion.
Make a motion to allow them to withdraw without prejudice.
Seconded. I poll the members of the board on the motion to allow the leave to withdraw without prejudice. So those in favor? Roll call.
Bob Levine, yes.
Tom Golden, yes.
Tom Pope, yes.
Ralph Lofton, yes.
Paul Junger, yes. Okay, Mr. Figurito and Tracy, this matter is given leave to withdraw without prejudice. So it has not been denied per se. If we had denied it, you would have no chance to come back for two years, okay? This matter is closed.
People mostly withdraw, I mean.
We have a motion.
To close.
Motion adjourned. Okay, we have a motion.
You got to close the public hearing, close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call.
Seconded by Tom Golden. Roll call.
Bob Levine, yes.
Tom Golden, yes.
Tom Pope, yes.
Ralph Lofton, yes.
Paul Junger, yes.
Motion adjourned.
Okay.
Roll call.
Bob Levine, yes.
Tom Pope, yes.
Ralph Lofton, yes.
Tom Pope?
Yes.
All right, Paul Junger, yes. The zoning board appeals adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Hi.
Did you get this in your packet?
I got that to you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.